Today is, well, actually, it's 1:00, so it's afternoon. But today is September 12, 2023. This is a Prescott City Council Study Session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Shishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
Today's study session, we're going to be discussing and have a presentation regarding proposed amendments or revisions to the following city ordinances. Prescott City Code Sections 5-2, 5-3, 5-4, and 5-7. Now, I know some of these concerns on these ordinances can be perceived as somewhat controversial, so I do want to admonish everyone that we will have a civil discussion and debate, and any demonstrations will not be tolerated. So please keep your comments civil and your responses to those comments in good decorum. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As we've talked about previously, we're in the process of updating some of our city ordinances, and some of these are ones that have received the most either complaints or questions, and we felt like we needed to update it. These first few, we'll be dealing with the animal code, dogs, hybrid dogs, and hybrid cats, and animals and fowl, and the next, dealing with noise. We're simply, we don't have a proposed ordinance for you, but we're seeking direction as we start the redraft process. So we didn't want to get too far down the road without getting council direction on where we want to go. There's some basic things we need to do initially that's clear that need to be updated. For example, there's references to the city-owned impoundment facility, which the city doesn't own at this point. So there's some things like that that'll be easy to remove and to update. But as we go through, we have a series of questions we want to ask and get direction from, and some basic suggestions, though none that we're married to at all, just in order to kind of facilitate discussion. We did, we do have some suggestions at the end. So Elaine Moore, who prosecutes these cases in my office, will present first on the animals and the dogs, 5.2 and 5.3.
Good afternoon, Council. So as Joe said, these are the four that we, four ordinances that we want to talk to you about specifically. As we look at the hybrid dog, hybrid cat ordinance, there's three things that are basically covered within that ordinance. That's the licensing fees, the rabies control, and then dangerous animal, what the definition of a dangerous animal is, and then the process for handling a dangerous animal. So I know it's very small on there, now that I see that on the big screen, but that is just a brief snippet of what the hybrid dog and hybrid cat ordinance is. And really, like Mr. Young stated, we want direction.
Elaine, can I interrupt you for a moment?
Yes.
I'd like to find out what the definition of a hybrid dog and a hybrid cat are. I know what the hybrid vehicles are, but I'm not familiar with this term.
Yes, so the hybrid dog or a hybrid cat, there's a definition within the statute. So essentially, that is a domestic species that is mixed with a wild species. It can be one, and excuse me, that should go out, or any dog or cat whose ancestry contains that type of breeding within the last six generations, or if you've purchased an animal and they have told you that that is a hybrid animal. So those are the three ways that you get.
So this is kind of in contrast to a purebred.
So specifically, we're looking at a few of these different questions, just to get direction as to how you want to proceed with it. First and foremost is an update on the licensing, and I will get into kind of what our fee looks like in comparison to some local fees around the area, as well as I just received some information that I think the council will find useful with regard to how much money the city is actually getting with any of these license fees. Currently, just so that the council is aware, it's $6 for an altered animal and then $30 for an unaltered animal. That's where we stand right now, although there are prorated rates if you are buying a license within the middle of the year. The next question would be related to limits on how many animals, or specifically, how many dogs or cats a person can own. We do have some limits within the statute or within our ordinances already, and just looking to see if you want to see more of that in terms of, as it relates specifically to dogs and cats. Do you want to handle, do you want to change the process that we have for handling dog bites? I'll kind of go through what our current process is. Do you want a section that includes biting animals? So right now, we have a section that is dangerous dog and a biting dog, but we don't necessarily have something that is applicable to all animals. So we want to know if you want to expand that to other animals that may bite you. Also, the nuisance citation. So we have in the code barking, howling, dogs.
Could you speak up, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
So we have in the code for barking or howling animals, and how that process is handled currently, it is a petty offense. And so do you want to see any change with that with regard to perhaps allowing animal control officers or other officers to cite that as a civil citation first, and then have so many options, or maybe so many violations before that becomes a criminal matter? Another question would be if you want an anti-tethering ordinance. I've seen that throughout the state as far as having some sort of anti-tethering ordinance related to the length of a chain or a rope that can be tethering an animal, and then what is required to be, what the animal is required to have access to if you are tethering an animal. And then, do you want to have an animal cruelty section? Right now, we don't have an animal cruelty section within any of the ordinance. It is covered by state statute, but there is at least an option within the state statute for cities to draft their own ordinance as it relates to that as well. So we'll kind of go each, through each of those in turn. So here's your comparative fees for around the state, Prescott Valley. An altered animal is $10, and $36 license, this is for one year. Now, they do have discounts if you buy two or three years at a time, but we just kind of, I just wanted to give you an idea for one year at a time what other entities are doing. Sedona is $10, and $30. You have Phoenix, that goes 16 for an altered animal, and 40 for an unaltered. And then you have Maricopa County, that has a $22 altered and a $55 unaltered license, and again, for one year. I was able to get some information from Officer Gray, who was informing me kind of what we're looking at with how we do our pet tags right now. The city works with a company called Pet Data, and when somebody goes in and buys a license, so let's just take for right now, we have an altered animal, the tag is $6 for a year. So somebody goes in and buys that license for $6. The very first, the individual or the entity that is selling that license takes $2 off of the top of that, and then you have Pet Data that was going to take $4.20 off. So by the time another entity sells it, we're actually, the city is in the hole two cents on that first license. So again, that's just for the altered, as it stands right now, and that's if another entity is selling it. Now, City Hall also sells that pet license, and then that $2 goes to.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question. I had a constituent reach out to me about the idea that there's a situation where, let's say, I just got a dog today, and it's September 12, and I go and get that dog its rabies shot and the tag at the same time. That tag expires at the end of the year, and it's at the end of December 31 through, that would be the end. So my tag is no longer valid. The trigger for me to go and get a renewal is typically the renewal of my dog's rabies shot annually. So then, no one's going to, it's not necessarily appropriate to get a dog another rabies shot within, you know, three months, say. And I'm wondering if you, in revising this ordinance or contemplating that, if you've kind of contemplated that scenario, and maybe is there an option to make that so we're not putting people in a position where either they're over-inoculating their dogs, which might, may or may not be good, or they're not paying their fee and kind of thumbing their nose at actually licensing their dog?
Sure. So as it, so I guess to your first question, if you are getting a license towards the end of the year, so that license would be prorated, and Officer Gray, if you want to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think then that that license that you're buying, you could buy an entire year at that point in time as well, correct? So you could buy a license that would take you?
Our license runs from the first year to the end of the year.
Okay.
And I know what he's saying, it can be a problem. We do give a little bit of a leeway.
Officer Gray, sorry, you're going to need to come up to the mic.
Council? Okay, this is something I have been wanting to look into, to be able to buy a license that would expire on your rabies expiration date. So I have been looking into that.
So would that contemplate the idea of, instead of it being year-end to the end of the year, that it would be like, say, rolling 12 months?
Correct, yes.
And is that something that we can accomplish with our current vendor?
Yes, that is something that we can look.
That is one thing that I think, it just seems like if there's a simple way to do that, to make it a little bit more efficient, and make it so we're not either telling people kind of implicitly to thwart their, getting their dogs licensed, or not, or again, I don't know, I don't know enough about dogs to know if like, getting multiple rabies shots within three months is a good or bad idea, but it seems to me, there's a burden, that's, there's a financial burden that would exist to getting a dog, you know, another.
Yes, that is something that's, with the veterinarians being so overburdened with the amount of clients that they're seeing too, some people can't even get into get their rabies shot within a quick amount of time. So I take that into account, too. So we will work with people on that. I have made some exceptions for some people because, because of not being able to get their rabies shot. It is a killed virus, so at most dogs, it doesn't bother them to get an extra booster a little early, and at that second booster, it's good for three years. So at least they won't have that same issue for a while, but, but I'm in 100% agreeance that we should make it expire when the rabies shot expires.
Sounds great. I appreciate that feedback.
Okay, so moving to, City Hall as well sells this license, a dog license as well, and if City Hall sells it, we don't get the $2, but you do have the $4.20 that Pet Data still takes off. So if City Hall is selling that same $6 license, you're at least making $1.80 off of that license for that year. As it relates to the increase, we will get into that, but what our suggestion would be is to increase at least that altered dog tag license to $10, and then increase the unaltered to 40. So right now, we're at 6 and 30. We would be recommending 10 and 40. One of the things, and really kind of a couple of my questions go to this, is if you want the two statutes or two ordinances to be combined. So right now, we have one ordinance that only deals with dogs, hybrid dogs, and hybrid cats, and then we have a second ordinance that deals with animals and fowl. And like I said, when we start getting into some of the questions that we have for you, perhaps it makes sense to combine these two because we are going to have similar restrictions or similar ordinances, and so perhaps it would just make more sense to put anything dealing with animals within the city into one ordinance. All right, so our first question would be regarding if there should be a limit on dogs, cats, or on other animals that a person owns within the city, certainly looking at potential hoarding, animal hoarding situations. Then you also have just this idea of presenting, preventing any nuisances within the area if you have multiple dogs that are gathered within a yard and just barking and howling at all hours of the night, if there's a smell associated with that. And of course, we, when we're talking about animals just in general, we're also bringing into that, you have the fowl that people are allowed to have, or one thing that we'll get into is pet pigs. So you have the ability to have a pet pig, and there's obviously noise and smell that go along with that as well. So does the city want to limit the number of animals, or do you want to limit it by the type of animal as well, moving forward, so that we have a very clear directive as to how many animals can be present on a property if they are, if there are certain requirements, et cetera? Which kind of leads me into that second question, should there be additional requirements or limitations given the type of animal ownership? So you do see some of these limitations within 5.3.1, so that's going to be maybe relating to the amount of land that you need to have in order to have specific types of animal, livestock in particular. It could be special pens or cages related to specific animals so that they can't get out. And then you have the minimum distance away from neighboring parcels, so that you don't have a situation where you are absolutely creating a nuisance right next to your neighbor. Then, as it relates to the dog bite cases, so this is what our current process is for a dog bite. So if I receive a complaint or a citation that a dog has bit someone within the community, it's going to come to me as a, as a criminal citation. The animal would then be declared dangerous and considered a public nuisance. There's going to be a civil sanction, it can be no less than $25, so that will be a given $25. It can be more than that, but at minimum has to be $25. Then the court has a couple of options that they can do. The first is requiring a general liability insurance policy that will cover at an amount no less than $100,000, so that if there was another bite to happen, there's insurance to cover whatever injuries were suffered by the victim. The second is that that dangerous animal may be required to comply with the requirement set forth in another part of our ordinance that involves signage, as well as the type of constriction that you need to have of that animal, whether it be a certain height of fence, or if it needs a muzzle, things like that. Those are requirements that are laid out within the ordinance, but at a first bite or a physical attack, it's a may. The court may require that, it may not. So at that first bite, it is conceivable or physical attack that you would have, the animal is declared dangerous, and you have a minimum of a $25 civil citation, nothing in addition to that. The second bite or physical attack, that's where the civil citation or the civil sanction goes up to $150. Again, that's just a minimum. Then you have the court shall require that policy of no less than $100,000, and the court shall require the requirements under Section 527(c) and d as it relates to dangerous animals. But then, a third attack or bite, then you have the civil sanction being 250, no less than 250, and then through a special hearing process, then the dangerous animal would be ordered to be humanely destroyed by the animal control officer or the humane.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is really for our animal control officer. Do you have discretion, particularly with the first bite? Because I know that some folks are just plain stupid when they walk up to a dog that they don't know, or that doesn't know them, and the dog perceives a, not so good situation and snaps. How, how much discretion do you have?
Yes, sir, that's a good question, and we do use discretion on that. We understand that a tooth of an animal and human skin can come in contact and get, and get broken. There's different ways of doing that. Maybe somebody's breaking up a dogfight, or, you know, maybe somebody's walking into somebody's own property and they get bit by the dog that's protecting it. We're going to take all that into account. What we would be more looking for in something like this would be a dog running loose and running after somebody, attacking them or their dog, that type of thing, in a vicious manner. But yes, we do use discretion.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
To further address that, Councilman, I was also going to mention that there are exceptions within the ordinance as it relates right now to some of those instances where you have either a puppy that's playing, or you have, somebody has provoked that animal, and it's not, even if it's not defending the property, if somebody provokes that animal. There are six exceptions that are listed out within the ordinance as it stands right now, in order to cover some of those issues.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, the question that seems to be before us on the slide is, should we have this process apply to all animals or just dogs? I guess my, what that makes me think of or ask as a question, response to that question is, are we having incidences with other animals that are biting people?
I don't really have a big problem with other animals biting people necessarily.
So nobody's worried about horses biting people or anything like that?
No, I'm not worried.
Or ferrets, or?
I'm not, nope.
I just, because if there was an outbreak of animal, other animals biting people, I would say, oh, well, maybe we should make it more inclusive.
Yes, I don't.
I mean, sometimes my cat bites me, but I don't, I think, you know, it's because I didn't feed her right, so.
Yes, and whenever a dog or a cat bites a person, we do a quarantine period, no matter what, and not necessarily that the animal's in trouble, but we do that for rabies protection, for both human and animal.
Got it. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I have a question about wild animals, like tigers and bears being kept in cages. Is that allowed in the Prescott city limits?
No, it's not. And that is another, again, when we look at, we've got the city ordinance, but then you also have a state statute that covers that as well.
Because many years ago, off of White Spar at the trailer park, there was a bear kept in a chain-link enclosure, and a small child was playing next to the enclosure, and the bear reached out where the food tray had been, was slipped under, slipped through, and grabbed the child and mauled it to death. So I just wanted to see if we allowed that kind of thing here. Thank you.
And I will say that that is prohibited through statute. Under our ordinance, only two animals are prohibited, correct me if I'm wrong, which is swine and roosters. So other things are prohibited through state statute, but our ordinance just addresses those two animals.
Thank you.
Councilman Shishka, you had another question? Duly noted. Please proceed.
All right, so Mayor Protem, one of the things that you had asked as well is if on this process, should this process apply to all animals, not just dogs? The other thing would be, do you want to change this process at all in terms of, do we want to still allow three bites before an animal could be considered to be humanely destroyed? Or is that something that, given the nature of the first two bites or physical attacks, is that something that you want to give that option to the courts earlier, as opposed to waiting until that third bite or physical attack?
Mayor Protem.
So I have a question, this is going to be for probably the animal control officer again. I guess in, and maybe not, maybe it's both of you, but how often is it that when we have people, when we have a dog that has gone through the first two gates of first bite, second bite, how often does that result in people having a dog go to third bite? I don't know if I'm phrasing that question in a way that makes sense, but I guess what I'm saying is, is there instances that, is it the majority of cases where there's first bite, second bite, and then that animal is, you know, the owner's got more control over the animal, potentially, or maybe they, you know, are, you know, monitor it more closely? Or is it that, you know, do we have a lot of third bite cases?
I wouldn't say we have a lot of third bite cases. We just, we had one recently that was pretty severe, required, and the dog being taken custody of in order to be humanely euthanized, because it was about the fifth bite on that one. Yeah.
I will tell you, in my time, my tenure here in Prescott, at least, I have had very limited third bite situations. However, I can tell you from my experience as a whole that the idea here is that you give animal owners or dog owners specifically, we're giving them an opportunity to put in place those restrictions, whether it's a muzzle on the dog, whether it's making sure that that dog is in a cage or something like that. But I have, I have absolutely seen third bite situations where we've tried to give them options. And again, as it stands right now, your first bite is just a, at minimum, it's going to be that civil sanction, and there's no other additional requirements necessarily. That second bite is where the court would then step in and say, no, you need to do these things in order to protect the public. And if one of those things were to fail, then that's where you're, you're looking and seeing third bites. So I do think that it is something that by, by not, not requiring those requirements earlier, you, you do run the risk of a third bite situation or a third physical attack.
And not to jump the gun, but we mentioned we'd give some suggestions, just to kind of preview that. We would suggest that we require the liability insurance after the first bite, but not allow for putting down the animal on less bites. So it would otherwise be the same, but it would require the insurance, for example, at the first bite.
Well, I appreciate the spoiler there.
Councilwoman Cantelmi.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So is there anything written here, I didn't see it, that would differentiate, you know, the bite from a pit bull, for example, or a German shepherd is different than from a poodle? I mean, do we have anything that substantiates and recognizes those differences? Because you can, you know, one of those big dogs, like a pit bull, can do a lot of damage. So do we give them a second? Can we, can we differentiate that somehow? I don't know, Joe, this is a question. I've seen it written in places, even insurance policies, that will call out the breed of the dog, and then the policy amount is charged accordingly.
And the answer is, we are somewhat limited when we're dealing with different breeds, treating different breeds differently, but to the extent that a breed has been shown to be more dangerous, or maybe bites more often, or has a bite that's more dangerous, we can make some distinctions there. So the answer is yes, and that's what we're looking for, direction there, if that's the route council wants to go, but we would have to tie it to evidence that shows that they're more dangerous in some way.
I think there's mountains of evidence on that, and I, and I think that is imperative, that we do something like that, again, because a poodle bite is a lot different than a pit bull bite. So I think we should call out. And, you know, that's pretty well substantiated. There's lots of case law on that, where we can single out some of those breeds that have a history of that. So I would like to see that. And then one other question, real quick, on the cost. Do we, do we know what it costs us as a city to administer the licensing, and is that $10 fee enough to cover what we, what our costs are?
So what I will tell you, the information that I have right now, the $10 fee, if we did the $10 fee, this, and it was sold at City Hall, the city would make $5.80 off of that sale. Now, I don't, I'm not, that is literally just with who takes a cut as far as the Pet Data and them taking their cut. That doesn't figure in employee costs or anything like that. So you're getting $5.80 off of just very hard numbers, and not considering any of the employment side of things and, and what the costs are associated with that.
So should it? My question is, should it reflect some of that?
It's, I mean, it's certainly within the council's purview in order to do that, if you wanted to make it a little bit higher, like by showing some of the other counties and entities that are making that higher. My understanding is that Pet Data, and I guess this was one thing, and I apologize for skipping over this, my understanding is that right now, Pet Data is asking for $4.20, but we have the belief that they will be asking for a little bit more in the new contract renewal. So that might be something that the council wants to take into consideration as well when it comes to that altered dog license fee.
Well, my reasoning behind that is not everybody, not every taxpayer that pays taxes owns a dog.
Sure.
So if we're charging the people that don't own the dog, you know, a fee basically, kind of is, for everybody else that does own a dog, is, shouldn't we be covering those costs for the luxury of owning an animal?
And I certainly think that we can do that. My understanding, and Officer Gray might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, as it relates to the city cost, but the idea is that Pet Data, we are taking the, we're receiving the information about the animal, and Pet Data is the one who is kind of dispersing it to who it needs to go to. So as far as employee interactions, it's the receiving of the money, and then the data entry, is that right?
Correct. Pet Data does most of the work. They, they do all the data entry, they take all the phone calls, they send out all the renewal notices, they take care of all that for that fee per license. So there's, there's minimal cost to the city as far as employees having to do anything regarding to animal licenses, other than me sending them off to Texas. And City Hall, the clerks there do, do sell them, so that's their time. That would be about the only thing I could think of as far as the city having to pay for that.
Officer Gray, could you speak to the proposal of monitoring specific breeds and what the likelihood of being able to deal with more aggressive breeds from your experience?
Oh, that would be a breed-specific legislation, is what that would be. I do believe it would be met with some pushback with the public if you were to specifically go after their breed of dog. And then you're, you can also come across the problem of having to prove, prove the lineage of that dog, you know? Are they going to have to get a DNA test to prove what, what they are? We mostly just go by each case and take each dog as to what happened, and we act accordingly, depending on if they need to be cited for a dog at large, dangerous, owning and possessing a dangerous animal. You know, it applies to any dog that breaks the skin. I've seen some, some damage done by, you know, healer dogs, and you name it. I've seen some, some damage done by, you know, healer dogs, and you name it. Any breed can definitely cause some damage, but I do see where she's coming from, is where some dogs can inflict more damage at that point. It becomes a civil liability between the victim and the, the dog owner, as far as damages.
Okay.
Officer Gray?
Councilmember Rusing?
I'm sorry. I just received a request from several of our council members that you move the microphone closer, so that they can hear you a little bit better.
How's that? Better?
Thank you. Earlier this summer, something bizarre happened. A young family member of ours was walking her elderly dog in front of her house, and the neighbor's dog jumped the fence and mauled the elderly dog to death right in front of her. And I assume that there's probably not a second or third chance when something like that happens, the dog is put to sleep. Does the code cover something like that?
As it stands right now, there isn't something that specifically says if the, the animal kills. That's something we could certainly add in there. And from my perspective, or one of the things that I would recommend, is that allowing that, the hearing can take place if there's reason to. So if, it doesn't have to go to a third bite for me to request a hearing. I just have to be able to prove what has happened. And so that would be, from my perspective, that's something that I would do if I received that report, that I would be requesting that hearing, that the animal be euthanized ahead of that third bite. But as it relates to something specifically in our ordinance right now, no, there isn't something like that.
Because I would like to request that we put that in, that if an animal kills another animal, then you don't get a second chance. It's pretty much game over.
Okay. So one of the questions that I would then pose to you as well is, as it relates to, like livestock or something like that. So if an animal gets out and kills a chicken or a goat, something like that, do you want that to have that same consequence?
Yes.
Okay. We can certainly work on that as well.
I was just going to say, I grew up rural, and if someone's dog comes over and kills your chickens or is chasing your animals, you have a right to shoot it.
And I will say that there are, there are remedies within the statute as well, but as it relates to the actual disposition of the, the animal that kills, there's not something that specifically addresses that right now in our ordinance. Am I okay to move on? All right. All right. So then we were looking at just this nuisance, this idea of the barking dog nuisance. So I've shown you what the current ordinance is, that 525. And the questions are posed on the left. Do you want to change the way that these can, these calls are handled, allowing the animal control officers or an officer to cite for a civil citation, as opposed to this being a petty offense straight away? And if you were going to do that, did you want something in there that indicates, how many times do you receive a civil citation before we would deem it then moving over to the criminal side? This kind of goes into, and I think Mr. Young will talk about this too, as far as our noise and our nuisance statute, as it relates to state statute with disorderly conduct. But this is something very specific, as it relates to dogs and, and the barking and the howling. And you'll see right there on 525A2, that it starts talking about, for the purpose of this section, it's five minutes or more, continuous minutes, on two separate occasions within 36-hour period. So we start getting pretty specific. I know that some, some cities will require those who are complaining, that they have to fill out a packet. There's a packet that goes with it, and what date, and what time, and how long, and that sort of thing, in order to cite that. So we kind of have two different ordinances. Again, we have this barking dog nuisance, and then Mr. Young will get into the nuisance ordinance, and then, of course, you have state statute. How do you want the interplay between those?
Councilmember Cantelme?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a quick question on this barking. We, we do have a couple of nuisances in our neighborhood, and our neighborhood group has, you know, called on this, and they've been cited repeatedly, but nothing has ever gone any further. How can we strengthen that? I like what you have here. Do you want to first, have a first violation of this code as a civil matter with a citation, only to become a criminal matter upon multiple findings? I think we need to strengthen that, because it's obviously not working, what we're doing.
Sure. So as it relates to the civil, just so that council is aware, when it comes to a civil citation, my office would not see that. I would not see that as the prosecutor coming through. It's only once they hit the criminal level that I would see it and be able to start tracking it. So when it comes to kind of knowing the frequency, that's where, I'm sure that Officer Gray could tell you, different addresses that she goes to often, or where she has specifics, because she's aware of her, her beat and what she's looking at. So that might be something that she could respond to as it relates on her side of things, if we were to change it into a civil situation. From our point of view, we just, we just got our new case management system, which I'm very excited for, and it does have a tracking feature on it. Not to mention, because we have a smaller office, that's something that I would see if it was coming in multiple times. If I'm still having the same individual that's coming to me multiple times, I'm going to be looking at increasing what those penalties would be every time that I'm meeting them.
From a prosecution standpoint only, so there's, you have more to consider, but only from a prosecution standpoint, it's easier to track, easier to enforce, if things start as a misdemeanor. And we're not even suggesting that, although for us, and for our office and our ease of tracking and enforcement, it would make sense, and it'd be easier to do so if it started as a misdemeanor and we could ramp up from there. But to do things just for ease of prosecution is, is kind of bad policy. So I think that, understanding that sometimes things happen, and having a civil, civil offense first, and how many civil offenses before it gets referred to our office, that type of question is one for council ultimately to decide.
Well, and one of the other things, too, the hump that some of the neighbors have never been able to get over, is they were told that they would have to record. So it says here, for five minutes or more continuous minutes. And that's part of the problem. They can't go over there and buy a recorder and record the animal. So how does that work for somebody that has a nuisance problem?
Yeah, I can elaborate on that. We don't generally tell people to record, because we can't prove that somebody's not there antagonizing that dog to bark and recording it at the same time. And due to it being a criminal offense, we have to prove that that crime is happening. So unless we're absolutely observing that that dog is barking in violation, which is the five-minute rule, that's going to be where we observe it. And it's, it's harder than you think. So we sit down the road, so we don't, we aren't in view of the dog. We shut the vehicle off, roll the windows down, time the barking. If it barks for, say, one minute straight and then stops, we start our time back over when this, when the dog starts over. But no matter what, we're going to contact that dog owner and let, give them a notice, let them know there's been a complaint. With it being a criminal offense, we do sometimes have to rely on folks aiding in prosecution, which most of the time, they don't want to do. So then our hands are tied, because we're not there in the middle of the night listening to the barking. We don't know, and I can't go issue a criminal citation if, if I don't have any proof. And if they're not willing to fill out a witness statement and come to court on it, if need be, worst-case scenario, then I don't have a case. All I can do is educate that dog owner on what to do going forward.
Well, that's exactly what I'm speaking about. That is a very hard thing to get over, if the people don't want to stand forward. But what, what if you had, is it, does it require one witness, or two, or three, or how?
We do like, that's a good question. We do like to have more than one neighbor, because then it's a he said, she said situation. Because it could be, a lot of my complaints come as neighborhood disputes, and it's not necessarily even about the dog or the barking. It's about this neighbor not liking that neighbor. So this is when we're going to go to other neighbors and ask, and say, hey, is this, is this an issue? Do you hear this? So we want to be, we want to be fair to both a dog owner and person calling in the complaint.
It's like the chicken and the egg, what came first? Because the violation happens, everybody hates the neighbor, and then, of course, once that happens, you can't, you're not going to get away with too much. But I'd like to have something where, if you can't go over there with a recorder, maybe have, require two witnesses to it.
Yes, we normally do two witnesses.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
So I think you may have kind of already answered my question, more or less, but can you speak to what the process is, so that maybe I have a better understanding of if there are adjustments that need to be made to this component of the ordinance? Because I guess I'm imagining myself being at my house, maybe it's like 10 o'clock at night, and the dog starts barking and wakes me up, and I'm like, oh, my gosh. Then, like, kind of, is there a protocol? I feel like I, there's a number you call, and how does that process work? Can you kind of elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. If you are disturbed by a barking dog, we do have a barking dog hotline. You can call that. We're not necessarily, we don't man it 24 hours, but you can leave us a message detailed on, we like to get the address of where the, where the barking is occurring, and then we're going to follow up on that. And we're going to call the person who called in the complaint, get, get a little bit more of an idea of what type of barking they're, they're concerned about, you know? Because obviously, if somebody's walking by a fence and a dog's barking, that's allowed. A dog is allowed to protect their property. What we look for is nuisance barking. So once we establish that, we do think that, yeah, this sounds like a nuisance issue, we are going to drive to that home canvass the area. Sometimes we'll even drive by randomly, if we're not busy during the day, and kind of take a listen for ourselves. We're going to contact that dog owner and try to educate him at that point. If it becomes an ongoing situation where the, the person complaining, there's two different types, two different parts for our city code. One is if I observe the violation, an animal control officer does, and I can cite them on that. That's hard to get. Otherwise, we rely on the person calling it in to fill out a witness statement and help aid in prosecution. Most of the time, they don't want to do that. But most of the time, we, we can get through to the dog owner by education, letting them know, hey, you know, you, you may not know you're at work, your dog's barking, driving the neighborhood crazy, and, and most people are pretty good about complying. But then we have our few that, that are not. So it would be nice to have a civil, a first offense civil.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing?
I just wanted to comment, I'm 100% for tightening up on our barking dog ordinance and making it easier to prosecute or fine people that disturb others' peace and quiet. Thank you.
Councilman Shishka?
Thank you, Mayor. Officer, you're the boots on the ground. In a perfect world, what would you suggest this ordinance look like? Or are you satisfied with the current ordinance?
That's why I brought this up. I was hoping that we could look into the first offense civil, because it might be a little bit easier, you know? That way, it's not on somebody's record. It's, it's still a fine, it's easier for us to do. Prescott Valley has something similar to that effect, but I, I don't know the whole details on it.
So your big issue is the first offense, and you'd like it to be a civil? If you, if you had your druthers, you'd like it to be a civil offense?
Correct. First offense civil would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Please proceed.
All right. And lastly, we wanted to talk about a potential animal cruelty section. Do you want to see one added into the ordinance? This would include a policy and procedure for the seizure of any animals that are subjected to cruelty, as well as a process for the disposition of those animals, whether it be through, like, a humane society adopting them out, something like that? And then also, the anti-tethering ordinance. Would you like to have one, is the first question? And then what types of restrictions do you think are appropriate? One of the things that I was looking at, as far as kind of canvassing what the state does, there are certain length restrictions, the, the type of chain or rope that you can have that's restraining the dog, then how long it has to be, what things that it can get to, whether that is water, food, shelter, those sorts of things. Shade is obviously something. And then taking into account potentially, like, weather issues. Are you allowed to have that dog tethered in what would be considered severe weather situations? So that's the other side of that animal cruelty section that we wanted to talk to you about. There is an animal cruelty statute, an ARS statute, a state statute, that is on point with this. And like I said, it does allow for the city to add an ordinance themselves, that at least maintains the minimum requirements under the state statute, and then we could look further, if you want one. And then that anti-tethering, as I was looking at our statute, Mr. Young and I were evaluating this, there's a little bit of differentiation between what a tether is versus a leash law and that sort of thing. So want to make sure that we tighten up on what you would want to see there as well. And then lastly, just kind of to summarize, and especially when I have Officer Gray here, I know that we didn't necessarily address a lot of the animals, when we're talking about just animals as a whole. In my discussions with Officer Gray, my understanding is that we do have potentially peacocks. Do we talk about an ostrich, or like an emu?
Emus, geese, the...
So there are some other animals. I know that we've kind of stated, or stayed heavily on the dog side, but that's why we wanted to at least bring the animal side into your purview as well, because we do have some other types of animals, some fowl, things like that, that potentially, we would want to take into consideration when we are looking at revamping these ordinances.
Councilman Shishka, you had another question?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, again, what would make your job more effective through any changes in this ordinance?
I would like to have a little bit more guidelines. Say, for instance, the chickens. You're allowed to have hens, but no roosters, but it doesn't say how many hens that a person can have. And so I don't want to come across a house with 40 chickens in the backyard of their apartment. So some, some guidelines would be great.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Cantelme?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm all for the, adding the cruelty section, and it should apply to all animals. On the leash law, after I read that, is there any possibility of putting a time limit? Because, and I am for no chains, no chains, period, but can we put a time limit on how long a person can tether a dog to a tree? I mean, it just can't be forever. Maybe eight hours maximum? I mean, I don't know. Are we allowed to do that, number one? Because then it crosses over into cruelty after a while. But providing water and shade, those should be requirements, bar none, absolutely. And then also, on the length, tethering a, a big dog to a tree with a six-foot leash is cruelty. Can we also stipulate that maybe it's got to be 10 feet? I mean, I'm just asking.
Yeah. So those, those are all things that we would be looking for as far as direction and guidance. And yes, there, there are different, different statutes or different ordinances throughout the state that are related to, to that, and how long that, that tether would need to be in order for it not to be considered. And I think, I don't know, Mr. Young, were you going to jump in there as well?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, and I just noticed, as Ms. Moore went through, that it looks like our suggestions aren't on the PowerPoint. Having said that, we would suggest some sort of tethering rule. I think that it's fair for the animals, but that we would limit it, meaning no tethering at night, for example, where the, where the animals are in danger, and more likely to bark and create the nuisances. So I think that, from an initial suggestion from our perspective, we would prohibit tethering at night, and requiring during the day, that tethering have a certain length leash and have access to water. I think those would be baseline suggestions that would be...
How about water and shelter?
Yes, or some sort of shade or something, we could do as well.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Moore, for your presentation. Throughout all the different slides and the different scenarios you've presented today, you've asked for council direction, and I've kind of waited until you were all done, because I think you're seeking council direction. And so I'd like to share just a few thoughts that I have. You asked the question early on, currently, there are two separate statutes with different types of regulations, depending upon the animal. And you asked, dogs, cats, animals, should they be combined? I personally feel like they should be combined. That's my sentiment, so I'd like to share that with you. I would like to see similar rules for cat owners, as there are for dog owners. You know, dogs aren't allowed to roam free. They have to be contained in a yard or on a leash at all times, but cats are allowed to roam free at all times, 24/7, and I think that's environmentally dangerous. They do a lot of harm in the environment, and also, they're messy. You know, I find cat poop in my yard, and I don't own any cats, and I have to clean up after it, because people are allowed to allow their cats to run free, and I don't agree with that personally. So I'm just giving you my perspective. I think dogs and cats should be combined. Another thing that wasn't discussed today, is part of this ordinance, but I wanted to bring it up, is dogs off-leash on city-owned properties, particularly trails and lakes. I cannot tell you how many times I'm hiking on a city trail, and people have their dogs off-leash every day, and they just feel like it's their right. They can just have their dogs off-leash, and I think that needs to be strengthened, and I wish it could be enforced. I know it's incredibly hard to enforce, but I've been charged by dogs, I've been barked at by dogs when I'm on a city trail, and I think that's wrong as well. I think that needs to be a part of this ordinance. We need to strengthen that. It just needs to be a fact. I mean, we have signs at our trailheads, dogs have to be on a leash. People just absolutely ignore it, and that's unfair to those who do adhere to those laws and who are out there trying to recreate in peace and safety. So, those are my two pieces of feedback today.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have two questions, and the first question I have is, it sounds like there is an animal cruelty statute on, in the Arizona revised statutes already. And I guess, one of the questions I have is, is there a redundancy that recreating, if we add it into our ordinance, or does it give us some additional benefit? Is my question. I don't know that, you know, if the statute's already achieving the intended goal, I guess I wonder about creating an additional layer of work there. And then, my second question regarding the anti-tethering component, is there anything in our statute, or do you guys contemplate anything in our statute, or in our ordinance, I should say? Do you contemplate anything dealing with dogs and cars, that are left in cars for a sustained period of time? Because I know that's something that people complain about, too. And I don't know if that's more difficult to enforce, or if it's, there's issues with it. I don't know how that works, but I know maybe having the conversation about why it's not in the ordinance might be useful, too.
Yeah, and that is something that we had discussed. There is a state statute on point with that as well. So, the state statute, and, Mr. Young, if I stepped on your toes, feel free to interrupt me. The state statute does allow for, so it provides minimum standards. So, if you wanted to increase what that looks like, and a city has that ability to do that. So, yes, we do have.
So, you're talking about increase above the minimum standard for animal cruelty?
Increase protection for the animals.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do you guys have a recommendation to do that? Or do you find that, in your experience, the animal cruelty under the statute as it currently exists is adequate?
Our suggestion is that it's currently adequate, except for in a few areas, specifically tethering. Because tethering is a form of cruelty, we would recommend adopting an anti-tethering ordinance, as we suggested, but otherwise, not recreating the will when it comes to animal cruelty.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding animals or dogs?
No, I just think that personally, I would weigh in on much more effective barking dog ordinances. I mean, I've dealt with a particular violator in my neighborhood for several years. It finally took the dog getting over the age of 15 for it to finally stop barking. You know, that's not a good solution. And I also see frequently a dogs-off-leash. And even though I provide pickup bags from the city, there's just so many people just disregard those as well. So, I just think we need a little more effective enforcement and making sure that these chronic violators start to have to feel a little bit of pain, not physically, but financially, and we can get this under a little bit better control.
And if there's one other aspect that I think we'd really like direction on, is regarding limits on animals, to the extent council wants any. And the reason why we bring this up, it's not something we see all the time, and it's not intended to prohibit someone from having two or three dogs, or four dogs. It is the hoarding situation where we often get, where people have dozens of dogs, and it becomes a real problem both for neighbors and for the health of the animals. So, our suggestion would be have some sort of limit on animals, and it would be a high limit, something like five animals for a half acre, and then five additional for each half acre threshold after that. I think something like that, that's a high limit, but it limits the real problem areas we see, which is that animal hoarding, the dozens of animals, and the dangers that we see that present. So, we would like some input on that, but that would be our suggestion, has have some sort of high limit, higher than may seem normal, five or six per half acre, for example, and be able to enforce that. I don't know if council has any perspective on that or opinion.
Well, I certainly think that's a reasonable expectation, and it's, I think it's quite liberal for anybody who's legitimately looking at as true pets, and you're not dealing with a real hoarding situation that creates health risks for the individual and for their neighbors.
And I guess I should also say that, in our suggestion, we would have that limit that's fairly high, five or six animals, but also exempt newborn puppies or cats. So, when you have a litter, you're not automatically brought into noncompliance. So, there'd be some exceptions for that type of situation, and that would be our suggestion.
Councilmember Kentelme.
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in and say, I would support that 100%. Maybe even go a little further. What about people that have five dogs in an apartment? Is that anything that we have the jurisdiction over?
Yeah, and I think that we have jurisdiction, in large part, anything that's health and safety, we have jurisdiction. We also have jurisdiction specifically granted by the state, as Ms. Moore mentioned, as it relates to animal cruelty. So, a certain amount of dogs in an apartment could be an animal cruelty issue, and we could address it through that means. Now, I don't know what the proper amount is, or number, when it comes to an apartment, and we'd be taking the direction there, but that is something we could do.
Thank you.
Councilman Tenny.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quickly, it sounds like you had drafted some options for us to look at, some recommendations. I'd be very, very interested in that. Typically, hearing from the experts in the field is a really good starting place for our conversations. We've kind of been all over the place with a variety of different ideas and proposals and whatnot, and I'd love to start from what you've got for us, and then kind of go from there when we talk about this in the future. Thanks.
I can certainly run and print off what our two slides were that have our recommendations, so that you have them. They were intended to be up here, but it doesn't look like they made the final cut, so.
All right, let's move on to the noise ordinance, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and council. We wanted to bring forward also the noise ordinance. And the noise ordinance, as listed here, is a difficult enforcement mechanism. Because of the way it's drafted, there's no specific benchmarks, there's no decibel limits, for example, and it's tied to the health and well-being of an individual, which, while also is a reasonable person standard, it's a tough thing to show, especially through the criminal justice process. And the language lines up so similarly to disorderly conduct that it is really just kind of superfluous at this point. And it doesn't address the main complaints we get, which I've listed up there, music being specifically the biggest complaint, or the driver of complaints, mostly by neighbors, but also sometimes by people complaining about restaurants or bars or that type of thing. Parties are a big driver for complaints, and then construction noise. Now, construction is dealt with specifically in the statute, but some types of noises, and the noises that generate the most complaints are not. So, this is our statute, and again, it kind of popped up small on there, but if you see in 5.4.1, that's the louds noise prohibited. 5.4.2 gets into specific types of prohibited acts. But the general prohibited acts there in 5.4.1 is creating permitting or showing of any, or allowing of any unreasonable loud and disturbing noise, which is defined as such character intensity or duration as to be detrimental to the life or health or well-being of any individual, or as to disturb the public peace and quiet of a neighborhood, family, or person. So, if you see that, and as I mentioned, it's very consistent with the Arizona revised statutes definition of disorderly conduct, which is right next to it, which is engaging in unreasonable noise that disturbs the quiet of the neighborhood, family, or individual. Because, like I said, because of that, they're basically the same statute, and they require the same sort of showing, and it's a difficult one to show. We will get into court with a situation where the person complaining alleges noise that's unreasonable, or that kept them from sleeping, but without any proof to do so, since there's no decibel range. So, that's why we wanted to come see if there was any desire to update the ordinance as it relates to these types of noises.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Recently, I've noticed, and people have brought to my attention, that there's these cars that race around downtown that seem like they don't have a muffler. They like to race around in the parking garage, and when you're at an outdoor event, you can hardly hear yourself speak. I see that this talks about tire, or tires squealing, but is there any way we could add loud vehicles?
Certainly. And I think that we're looking for that feedback. And that's not even one that I thought of, but it does make sense that sometimes, and I think it would require probably some timing, maybe nighttime hours prohibit certain loud vehicles.
Because we'll be at events, you know, down at the courthouse, and these cars just seem to enjoy driving around the block while we're trying to have an event.
I think that's, and I'll ask for input from council as a whole, but I think that is a good thing to keep in mind.
Councilwoman Kentelme.
So, I'm going to say exactly what Kathy just said. I had something very similar, and I'm sorry to always be the one talking, but I do live downtown, not in an HOA, in a high-density area. We have noticed a new club that's popped up, and it's exactly what Kathy said. I've had nothing but complaints all summer long around the square, you know, go to the concerts. I did, I lived in Cave Creek for many years. Cave Creek adopted a decibel ordinance on Harley-Davidsons, because they had a problem going down through Cave Creek Road into Cave Creek. It was very successful. The biggest key was enforcement. They actually enforce it, they do it today. Can we do anything about approaching this club? I understand, and I don't know this for sure, it's a fairly new club, they've got 25 or 27, you know, younger people in there. They've low-rided the cars, and they have those, and I'm not a car person, those big giant mufflers that make them louder. And so, Goodwin is a bypass street for a lot of them after drinking hours are over. So, all night long, they'll be going by, and they rev those things up, and they're extremely loud. Again, from experience, this can happen, but it's got to be through a decibel. Is there anything that you've considered about, I think it came, they had a gun that they would shoot, you know, like, some kind of a decibel rating radar gun, I don't know what it was, but somehow, they did it, they enforced it, and it's worked. And I think we need to look into that in the downtown area now. This is not, I've been down here for a long time, and it's just gotten really bad lately. Thank you.
Thank you, and yes, certainly. That's, and as we talk about decibel readings as a possible way of enforcement of a noise ordinance, I think that's a place to start.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Kathy stole my thunder, and then Connie added to it. I personally think that the number-one violator of the noise ordinance is vehicle noise. I live off of Rossar, and there are vehicles multiple times a day that have these extremely loud engines, and it's like they're purposely just making loud noises, just to make loud noises all times of day and night, all up and down Rossar. And we have to live with it every day, and it's very annoying. And I think we need to have a vehicle noise ordinance that has to do with engines, not just tires.
Yeah, I think that's, I think this is really good feedback, and what we're looking to get. And I will say that, under our current ordinance, a loud vehicle like that would not be in violation of this ordinance. It's just not built or set up that way. Clearly, tires screeching and so forth. But going to the general noise prohibition, it's of, of a duration, character, intensity, and you probably don't meet that with the duration. Those are individual cars as they come by. But it's intensity, and I think, but I think getting specifically and dealing with those situations, rather than trying to fall under this kind of broad general prohibition, is a good way to go about that.
Mayor, may I add?
Councilmember Kentelme.
Just make a comment. You know, they are posted currently, currently, right now, you can go down to Gurley, right by that old Chinese restaurant, and there is a sign posted that has a noise ordinance number on it. It's been there for years. It just has never been enforced. And I think that that went up, if I remember correctly, because of the Harley-Davidsons back in the day, but it is there.
Yeah, and I'll say, and Elaine can speak to this, because she prosecutes these cases. She deals with these cases all the time, noise cases, and prosecutes them. But given the way our statute's written, it's difficult. So, she'll deal with it, but these are difficult cases, because we don't have firm guidelines. And just like Officer Gray mentioned, and relating to animals, what she would like is guidance and specific guidelines. And that's what we're looking to do, specific guidelines that meet community standards that are enforceable, rather than somewhat vague in nature.
Yeah, and I think if we had a decibel gun, that could be applied to not only those extremely loud racing vehicles, but also some of the motorcycles that seem to have that same intention. If there's any kind of an event going on in the Courthouse Plaza, they got to have, you know, maximum revving up, so everybody's, you know, turn and look at them, right?
It's a nuisance. It really is a nuisance.
So, that enforcement process could be expanded to really any vehicle, whether it's a motorcycle, or a passenger vehicle, or truck, et cetera.
I appreciate that. And it sounds like, so far, the loud vehicles, motorcycles, is kind of the biggest problem that you've been dealing with or seeing. Now, getting into construction specifically, this is our current ordinance as it relates to construction, which limits certain types of loud construction during, from 6:00 to 8:00. And so, this is fairly reasonable, but it leaves out the most frequent complaint, which we have there at the bottom, is the, kind of the beeping from backup alerts. And so, we would suggest adding that beeping into it. Okay, so, here, we've listed some options for new ordinance. Now, I've heard from you the importance of dealing with loud vehicles, and I think that makes sense. The other question is whether we want to deal with specific decibel limits. So, as we set specific decibel limits, I wanted to make sure to notice aircraft usage. In almost all noise ordinances, ones that have gotten into specific decibel ranges, they exempt aircraft and certain other usages. But I wanted to keep in mind that, as we set a decibel for decibel limits, we are establishing a community standard. So, you want to be careful setting a community standard or a decibel limit that is lower than what is commonly comes out of an airport, for example, or other uses that we find important. So, I just wanted to bring that up. The other issue is the C-weighted decibel restrictions. Now, I think this is important to mention, and I don't know if we're there yet with our technology, but oftentimes, we'll hear of complaints about noise, and we may even go test the noise, or the decibel range there, and it's just well within the normal range. But that is not, those noises aren't what generally bother people, it's the loud bass noises. And so, there has been a kind of a rising number of communities that use this C-weighted range to measure loud bass noises, the ones that generally impact life and sleep more than any other. And generally speaking, carry more than other noises as well. So, we wanted to bring it up, that the C-weighted decibel measuring is becoming more common. And I would say there's about a dozen cities that have started restricting noise based on this C-weighted concern. And see whether there was any interest from council of exploring that option as well. As we look into this, we have to determine a timeframe for measuring. So, instead of a general intensity, duration of a certain character, oftentimes, when we're talking about noises, especially the C-rated range, these bass noises, it's about how long they're happening over a certain period of time, and generally at night as well. We generally see these restrictions at night rather than daytime. And so, whether council wants to see this type of timeframe, and generally, it would be about 15 minutes, whether a noise exceeds a certain decibel range over a 15-minute period at night. And then, the final question that we raise, and looking for direction, is where to measure the noise. So, noise generates in a location, obviously decreases as it spreads, and whether we measure at the property line of the location causing the noise, or at the property line of the complaining party. And I think that the most likely, or I think probably the suggestion would be that it'd be measured at the complaining party's property line. Because when we talk about noise, especially this C-rated noise, it's really in the eye of the beholder, but if we set an established limit, and we measure it from a complaining party's property line, I think that makes the most sense. So, our suggestion would be to explore the idea of a decibel range, include vehicles, as that was brought up, and also include beeping in the construction ordinance. And so, we're looking for direction on those issues.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, I have a question. I guess one of the things that I think sometimes you ask kind of what our feedback was, and some of the feedback I've gotten recently has been about noise complaints about special events, perhaps, or unique things that are happening as one-time events, as opposed to a neighbor who's just constantly having a party that's really loud. And I guess, my understanding, and I'm looking for your education here, do we allow with special-use permits, do we exempt people from these noise ordinances? And I guess, do you, if the answer to that is yes, is there a way to hold people who are coming to the city, seeking a special-use permit, accountable to some modicum of reasonable sound levels?
The answer is yes on both. So, the special events would have an exception to the noise ordinance. And the secondary question being, can we have some sort of levels or restrictions, or maximum? And the answer is yes as well. That would be... That would be up to council, but I think the best way to go about that would be to leave it exempt, and I know that's probably not what some people would want to hear, but I think we'd leave it exempt, but we have to tighten up our policies in terms of special events and permits. The policies, internal policies within the city should establish what those maximums are, what the time limits are, because it may be different depending on the event.
Yeah, and I think that makes sense. And I, your suggestion seems fine to me that we don't necessarily stop exempting those events, but I think there's gotta be some way for us to say, hey, if you're exceeding this, like, I don't care if it's, you know, Taylor Swift coming to Prescott, at the Prescott Fairgrounds, like, there's some level of what's reasonable that we can stand, and this is not it.
And I'll look for direction here, but I think that a good way to handle that would be to, along with this ordinance, bring forth a policy that council can look at as well that would establish some guidelines.
I, for one, would welcome that.
Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you. We just had the county fair. I live about three miles away, and I'm telling you, it was really loud. I think they had a band or something. We got a lot of complaints. Is there any way this ordinance could apply to the rodeo grounds? I know they're, they're working on a new sound system with the renovations, but with that fair, it was, I think, it was like 100 times worse than it usually is.
Yeah, so I'll say that under the current ordinance, outdoor speakers are generally prohibited. There is, those outdoor speakers that were established before the ordinance was originally passed, which were essentially grandfathered in, and then there are special events. So those are the two exceptions. The ones that were established before the establishment of the original ordinance, and then special events. And so you asked the question, can this apply to the fairgrounds? We own the fairgrounds, we need to set policies. And we also approve special events, we need to set policies. And I think that is a good way to handle it, is to establish the policies that we need to then hold ourselves to and enforce as it relates to special events.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Tenny.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, I would echo what's just been said, we need to have some reasonable limits even for exempted events on the amount of noise that's emanated to a certain distance, et cetera. The other piece I have a question about, I, like probably everybody else in the room, I've been driven crazy by the backup alarms on backhoes or whatnot. I'm sure you've already thought through, you know, scenarios in which properly permitted construction is going on, and, you know, what times of day, things like that. There's already in our ordinances, limits on times of day for construction, et cetera. I certainly wouldn't want to be in a situation where, you know, if I can hear a backup alarm from a backhoe three properties down, that we ban that and nobody can use their backhoe or build a house ever again, that type of thing. So I'm sure you thought through that, but some recommendations around what that would look like as well. I'm certainly in favor of some, some ordinances around that, but, you know, something super reasonable that's gonna allow for people to build on their own private property.
And my suggestion would be, and again, looking for direction, but my suggestion would be that we add the beeping into the current construction ordinance, which prohibit, would prohibit beeping from six and, or excuse me, eight at night to six in the morning. And so I think that is, is very reasonable, and I don't know if we'd even want to extend that. I know some cities do have extended hours, or extended prohibited hours during the winter, for example, where the, yeah, it gets darker earlier, it stays darker later, and so the prohibited hours are extended essentially during nighttime hours.
Well, I can say that there was a, and this is probably true throughout the city, is more of these more difficult parcels to be able to build on are being attempted to, sometimes successfully, sometimes not. And I know in my development, there was one very difficult parcel that had hammering to break down rocks for almost seven months, every single day. It was, it was so obnoxious that we even had a couple of people end up moving away. It was just really bad. They ended up finally getting enough space to build that house. But I think there has to be some type of reasonable limitation for duration, and then also if they actually follow the rules and don't start before like eight o'clock, I think, in the morning and...
If I could get clarification, by duration, do you mean length of time of a project for months, or length of time during a day?
Well, I think during the day, obviously, and then maybe over the course of a project, something that is such an extended, I don't know, violation of people's ability to have peace and quiet within their neighborhood, if it takes months and months and months. I know in our HOA requirements in our area, that there has to be a certificate of occupancy within one year. But that's becoming harder and harder with all the labor problems and material problems and things like that. But I think there has to be some reasonable limit.
I think that makes sense. I think clearly prohibiting those types of noises during nighttime hours makes sense, but having kind of an outer limit on time that a project might last, that's that obtrusive would make sense as well, and we'll look at drafting some language for that. Is there any other questions on the noise before we go to the next one?
Well, I don't know. We've spent a lot of time on dogs and hybrid species, et cetera, and noise as well. Do we have any public input on those two topics yet?
Are any of the comment cards for those two ordinances? I'm gonna guess not. No.
Hearing none, then we'll proceed to our next category.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The final ordinance that we have looked at redrafting is the sexually oriented businesses ordinance. So I have here what we've done. I should state also, based on some feedback, I also made a few changes in the initial draft. And again, this isn't in final form, and I'll be bringing it to you later, looking at feedback at this point. But we're a little bit further along, and I made some changes, including the findings section that talks about incidences of sexually transmitted diseases, HIV and so forth. A lot of those are really dated. And based on a lot, some of the newer ordinances that we're seeing related to sexually oriented businesses, we updated that, based on input with the mayor as well, to generalize it and make it so in five years or 10 years, it wasn't outdated as findings. So we simplified that and also added a reference to the state statute about providing harmful material to minors. So under state law, providing certain harmful material, which is defined as essentially pornography type materials, is a criminal offense. And so we included references to that in them as well. Now, the changes to the sexually oriented businesses was essentially to close some gaps that we had seen in the ordinance as it relates to more modern, more modern businesses. And so you see there on the right-hand, or the right-hand side of the screen, but on the left-hand list is the ordinances, or the businesses that are currently covered by our sexually oriented businesses. Adult arcades, bookstores, cabarets, motels, motion picture theaters, theaters, escort agencies, nude model studios, and sexual encounter centers. And to be quite frank, we see very little of these in the city, and a lot of these are quite dated. You don't see them very much anywhere. But it left out some of the things that we do see that have a potential for harm, especially to minors, but also to character of the community. And we wanted to address those. So we added four new elements, adult entertainment entities, bathhouses, body paint studios, and massage parlors. And so most of those are obvious. Adult entertainment entities are essentially traveling shows, traveling sexually oriented businesses. And you see, for example, adult cabarets, which deal with strip clubs and so forth. There are traveling shows that come in one at a time, or every few weeks, or a few months. None of that is covered. So these types of adult-oriented shows that aren't in a permanent location were not governed at all by the sexually oriented businesses and left us without an opportunity to enforce or to oversee. And so the point of the adult entertainment entity is to capture these traveling shows or these one-time shows, to be able to regulate that, and just make sure to limit harm to minors and potentially criminal activity. So if you could go back a little bit, I want to show you at the bottom left there, the primary purpose of the current ordinance, which is to require licensing, along with background checks for sexually oriented businesses. So under the current ordinance, and under the ordinance as drafted, in order to operate a sexually oriented business, or to be an employee of a sexually oriented business, you have to go through a licensing process with the city, which includes a background check to make sure that you don't have a sexual offense or other disqualifying criminal record. It also requires qualifying businesses to locate in certain areas, industrial areas primarily, and it limits the entry of minors. So those were, are the, the primary purpose of the sexually oriented business, and all of these, throughout the state and throughout the country, all of these ordinances were adopted around the same time, in the late 1990s. They all look pretty much the same, and then there's a reason for that. There was case law that really narrowly defined what could be done, and Prescott, Yavapai County, and most other jurisdictions drafted their ordinance based on what that case law was. And so ours was like that, and hasn't been updated since then. And that's why the intent of adding these businesses, and to be able to regulate those businesses as well. So we made some definition changes. One was to include those four businesses, as I mentioned, and the second was to change from requiring the sexually oriented business be a part of the primary purpose of the, primary business purpose to any part of the business. So what that means is, under the current ordinance, if you sell certain stuff, or if you have sexually oriented activities as part of your business, you can still not qualify as a sexually oriented business unless it's a primary purpose. And what is a primary purpose? It's not defined. So it leaves a problem and a gap. And you'll see in some cities, they actually define it. If your 20% of your sales are related to these types of, certain types of goods, then you qualify as a primary purpose. But in order to simplify that and to kind of get away from judgment calls and discretion, we eliminated the primary business purpose to any part of the businesses engaged in one of these covered sexually oriented areas, then you are covered by the ordinance. We also changed the definition of semi nudity to include, and nudity, to include not only female breasts, but prosthetic breasts, and then added the buttocks as a form of semi nudity that's covered under the ordinance.
Councilman Tenny.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, can you clarify for us? I know that we've got constituents, from the feedback that we've received about this already, though we're just looking at this in study session today, no voting's occurring, but constituents who would like to see many of these businesses or activities totally banned in Prescott. And we may even have people on the dais of that mindset. What legal authority would we have to, to do that versus just regulating them in the way that you're talking about here?
The question becomes down to conduct versus speech. And so conduct that is criminal in nature can be regulated. Speech cannot be regulated. And so the idea primarily is to be able to have some enforcement authority, to be able to go into these businesses and see if the conduct is criminal, and have some oversight, and also to be able to keep out minors. And so it's a protection of minors primarily, but also oversight to ensure that there's not the criminal sexual activity. And for example, we have massage parlors as one of the items we added. If there are massage parlors, it's not necessarily illegal on its own, but there is sometimes criminal sexual activity happening therein, and we do not have authority as a city, as a police department, to go in to make sure that criminal activity is not happening unless we have probable cause. So the intent is to have that registration, to be able to make sure that reputable people are running these businesses, and then have oversight by police department or other departments to go in and ensure that there's no criminal sexual activity, and as I mentioned, to the protection of minors. So minors aren't allowed in sexually oriented businesses, and, but we are not intending to limit the free speech of individuals, but protect minors and prohibit, prohibited criminal conduct.
Gotcha, I appreciate that. So it sounds like legally, for instance, if I said, I don't want any adult theaters in Prescott, that's not something that we're at liberty to restrict, but the behavior, the actions within that theater specifically, entry to minors, et cetera, is something that we can under ordinance restrict.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So those are the changes to the ordinance. It's broadening it to incorporate and to cover more businesses. The intent is to provide better and more oversight, and to be able to, as I mentioned, protect minors from potentially sexually oriented businesses, and in order, and in that way, protect kind of the character of the community and the children therein. So that is our suggested changes, and we're looking for direction here, but I think we're covering about as much as we can cover, given our limitations on prohibition of speech.
All right, then I, I will make the statement that there were a number of people in the community that reached out to me and were concerned about the attempt by the council to ban all of these performances. And we recognize that entertainment is a protected class of speech and behavior, but there is a legitimate ability to restrict some of the activities from, from minors, and that is legitimate. So we're not here to, to ban things, but to be able to regulate and make sure that minors are protected within the ability to create regulations that are defensible and under the case law and statutes. So at this point, I would be happy to listen to public comment. And again, I want to admonish everybody to be civil and allow the speakers to make their points, and demonstrations, pro and con, are not going to be really tolerated, so let's keep it civil. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Sherri Hanna, and I live at 2503 Willow Creek Road here in Prescott. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you today. This morning, I sent to Mayor and Council a video report from Dr. Jeffrey Hansen. Dr. Hansen is a pediatric adolescent and adult psychologist who lives and works in Prescott Valley, who deals with counseling patients regarding experiencing issues dealing with exposure to sexually explicit entertainment or pornographic materials. Obviously, Dr. Hansen is against exposing children or minors to sexually explicit entertainment. I have also provided Mayor and Council with a partial transcript of that video of talking points to refer to, and have, and I also have a few copies for the public if they would like them. I understand that not, not all such sexually explicit activities can be prevented by the city, but proposed revisions to our ordinances will allow for greater monitoring to ensure the protection of minors. So I want to thank our city attorney on all the hard work he's done in this endeavor. Respect, I respectfully request that the ordinance revisions that you consider will be as strict as possible within the law in order to protect our children and help to keep them from being exposed to any sexually explicit entertainment or businesses. Thank you.
James Downey.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a seven-year resident of Prescott. I may step into the minefield and I may be the first one to go here, but let me make two points. Number one, your ordinance doesn't discriminate against anybody's rights or anybody's behavior. There is adult sexual contact that doesn't belong in the public spheres. We don't allow it in the, we show movies to families in the public square, we have music. We don't have X-rated movies shown there, we don't have other kinds of content there. We've long recognized as a legislative body and as a country that there's content that belongs behind closed doors, specifically sexual content, and more importantly, that which can influence children that can't handle it, that can't process it, and that can't deal with these ideas that are put before them, and especially at a very young vulnerable age. I think that's one of the big focuses as to what's going on here. I, I think your ordinance is perfectly fine. I agree with the lady that just spoke. I think it is a step forward, and it's gonna define the nature of Prescott, as you said, Mr. Young. What kind of a community do we want to be, and what kind of a community do we, do we want to be known as? Family-friendly, do we want to support the values of the vast majority? Do we want to support the values of the vast majority of the citizens, or to be swayed by ideas that are frankly quite uncomfortable to a lot of us? And I'll take one step into the minefield, and I won't go very further. I should have been the last guy to talk today rather than the first, but on August 8th, you had a gentleman speak to you at the open call to the public by the name of Jerry Hahn. He is the founder of LGB Patriots, and a longtime member of the LGB community. He spoke out quite vociferously against the agenda that is being foisted across this country, and it's not just local here, that affects young children. He's got the high ground. I can stand here and talk all day about that. But when somebody with his qualifications gets up here and tells you that there's something that you need to be aware of, and that there's a movement that's going on, whether these people recognize it or not, that can be very harmful to our children in the long run, you ought to pay attention to it. And I guess I'd ask you all to do your own research and find out what's going on across this country with children, not just in Prescott, but across the country, and it's a very disturbing thing. And I think if you don't go forward with this ordinance, you've taken a step backwards. If you go forward with it, I think you've taken a step forward to at least address that problem. Thank you.
Rosalyn May Hall.
All righty. Can you all hear me okay? All righty. First of all, I would like to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak on this subject. Under the adult entertainment thing, I am assuming drag shows. I'm speaking as a drag artist born and raised here in Prescott, Arizona, under the House of Hughes. The proposal of limiting these, I would not say, don't put all drag under adult entertainment. Yes, there are entertainers that do cater to adult audiences. And for those shows, as the House of Hughes, we are cautious in the handling of our events and make sure that all 18-plus content and shows are private, ticketed, secured, and carded events that you're easily ID'd multiple times as you go in, that are restricted to only performing in an adult capacity. These precautions prevent any and all minors from entering the space. We are performing in private spaces. We're not just on the courthouse square. And then, although we do host age-appropriate events, such as the Pride Festival that was held on Saturday, June 24th, 2023, we were met with criticism and disapproval from multiple community members. This event was family-friendly and a safe space for the LGBTQ+ youth that normally do not have a space in this town. Growing up as a member of the LGBTQ+ community in Prescott, I have rarely felt welcome, and I've been harassed by members of the community countless times. Actively, the decision to remove youth completely from the age-appropriate events, I do not condone minors in the 18-plus spaces at all. There is no agenda going on, especially with those lack of spaces, especially for in the teenage range. There is nowhere for them to go, and they will continue being ostracized by their peers. How can we call ourselves everybody's hometown when we censor, ostracize, and put down those who are different from the norm? Thank you.
Kathy Davis.
I'd just like to reiterate, it's just really important to me that Prescott be an inclusive, welcoming town, and that people feel safe. And I, and I feel like, you know, banning drag shows does not make people feel safe. And you know, I'm at the high school, and I, and kids are killing themselves because they don't feel safe. So, I'm really, you know, just want to reiterate that people should be feeling safe and welcome in Prescott. And people are moving away, young people are moving away because of, you know, things that a few people do. It's not feeling like everybody's hometown. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Horniman, and I am a Prescott resident. I'm, I'm just here to ask that the study sessions are representative of our community as a whole. We're holding them Tuesday at 1:00 in the afternoon. There's not a single representative here from the entertainment district, any of the dance academies in the city. The room is empty, and it really is difficult for working people or students that want to participate to be a part of these study sessions. And I hope that we can look for a more inclusive time for citizens of Prescott to be a part of these. I also think that this is not happening in Prescott. We do not have strip clubs in Prescott. I attended a fundraiser, that is a well-loved fundraiser, raised half a million dollars. The chief of fire did a topless dance. It was fun, it was inclusive, there was no, it was a fundraiser for children. I just feel like this is not an issue that is happening in Prescott. There are not youth that are being exposed to inappropriate sex shows in any regard. Anything that is adult-based is well-secured, you're carded before you get in. It's a choice that adults are making to see shows. Anything that's traveling in is invited in to the community. And again, is an adult-ticketed event. I just think that these issues that might be happening countrywide are just not here. And so, to make something out of nothing is just shining a light on the few entertainment shows that are maybe put under this umbrella where it's not appropriate. So, those are my comments today.
That's all, Mayor.
I think that concludes our study session here. Again, we're not taking any action. We're just examining and deliberating how these ordinances might be improved. So, when we get a final version, that will come to the council for a vote. But again, I want to make sure that the public that is concerned about some of these ordinances realize that they're focused on the changes, not expanding far beyond those areas that I think are inaccurate in their concern. So, let's focus on what the proposals actually are. And again, you'll have an opportunity to see what the final versions are when they come before the council for a final adoption and a vote and adoption. Thank you, and this study session is adjourned.